Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, May 5th. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We move to the adoption of previous council meeting minutes. Can I have a motion for that set of minutes, Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the minutes of the city council meeting held April 21st, 2014 be adopted.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? It looks like we got everything. If everything is in order, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We move to the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Rice?
Okay. I move adoption of the agenda with the addition of 8.6 Young Offenders Centre purchase and 8.7 arts sculptures.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. So we have the agenda with those two items from our special Community Living Committee meeting just prior to council. Any discussion or debate on the agenda as proposed? Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well, and that takes us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter that isn't the subject of a public hearing. Now, we don't have any public hearings tonight, so I think everything that you came tonight to talk about is fair enough, is fair play. So, we do, if there's a, I'm guessing, knowing some of the folks that are in the crowd, that there may be one topic in particular that's of interest to people. So, just so everybody knows the ground rules, we do try to keep everything to a few minutes in terms of a presentation, and if you agree with something that somebody else has said, you could simply, you're more than welcome to come and address council as well, but if we get to a point where everybody's repeating the exact same thing, then feel free to say I agree with the previous presenter, but we do want to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to be heard. So, with that, we usually just do this by whoever would like to come forward first, since we didn't have anybody that had let us know ahead of time that they wanted to speak. So is there anybody that'd like to come forward to the presenter's table and address council? Come on up, and when you do, please be welcome, have a seat, and just introduce yourself, your name, is all we need, just for our recording secretary, so we can make sure that we have it in the minutes. And the microphones are typically pretty sensitive, and they should be able to pick you up without you having to speak too loudly.
My name is Gail Bellwood, and I live on 96th A cul-de-sac north, as we call it, and this is to do with the parking, the problem that we have in that area. And I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. In the paper, it said that it was going to be brought to city council, it was recommended to the Community Service Committee after this small meeting that we had at the library, that it would be residential parking with residential permits, which I agree, that is what anybody that I've talked to, we want that to happen. The only thing is, in the paper, it said it would be from 104th Avenue to 107th, but 98th to 100th. Now, I want that clarified. Is that a misprint in the paper, or is that the way it's going to be? Because that only takes care of in front of the hospital to 100, not 96th, in that area behind the hospital.
No, but I think our Community Living Director maybe can bring up that map, and we'll do that. Do you have that up right now, Gary? Sure. So, option three, the one that was recommended forward by committee, so maybe we can look at that while we're talking. And I understand there may, the recommendation from committee did cover from essentially avenues from 95th all the way through to the other side of the hospital. So it did cover 96th Street.
Okay, 96th A cul-de-sacs and that type of thing. So it would be just residential, with parking permits for residents?
The recommendation from the committee was restricted permit parking only.
Okay.
And, Gary, were we able to get that up? Doesn't look like, okay. But, yeah, it certainly does go all of the avenues. It does not cover 95th Street, 5th Street and working in and going out.
I thought that might be the case, that it was just a misprint, but I had to clarify that, because I thought if you bolt on it, it's 98th, that doesn't help us a bit behind the hospital.
Certainly appreciate that note. The intent is to cover all of those areas.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ms. Bellwood. Okay. Is there anybody else that'd like to come forward and address council on this or any other community-related matter? As I said, feel free, if you just simply want to come forward and say I agree with the previous presenter, or simply state your position, you're more than welcome to do that. And if there's nobody else that wanted to come forward and address council, we do close this portion, if there's nobody coming forward, and then we'll move on to getting on to the, oh, there we go, there's our map there. Okay. And so, the areas outlined in red would be restricted parking. Now, I was informed by our Community Safety Director that there was one oversight in the recommendation that came from committee. This is essentially an expanded version of the status quo. The status quo is that it's restricted times of day from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and that was the intent, would be to continue that on with these, essentially just expanding those areas. Okay. So just so that everybody is clear, that was, maybe didn't quite come through in the motion from committee, but this essentially expands the areas of restricted parking to those highlighted here in red. So is there anybody else that wanted to come forward and address council on this matter? We'll be voting on it a little bit later on in our agenda, but this is the opportunity where you have to come and speak to it. Sure. I just want to make sure that nobody misses their turn, their opportunity. Come and have a seat. Introduce yourself, please. Go ahead. Yes, sir.
My name is Greg Lidgett. I actually own two properties in the affected area, and I would also like to agree with the last speaker. I fully support the city's announcement for permit parking. I think it's the only solution. I would like to address this as more of a hospital problem, and I'm really curious, because I live right beside the hospital. And this is a hospital parking problem, and it seems to me that the city spent an awful lot of time and money trying to deal with the hospital's issues, and I don't understand why we're paying for provincial issues to begin with. But at any given time, the parking lot at the hospital would be half-empty, because the employees don't want to have to pay for parking, right? Our concern is that this isn't going to really alleviate anything, it's just going to move it out, right? So I don't know if city council is looking for future development or something to do with this. I mean, I'd be willing to help out in a fundraiser to get a parkade built for the hospital, right? That's pretty much all I had to say.
Thanks very much for the presentation. We may have some questions for the delegation, I don't know. See, Councillor Rice, I think you had a question about the map, but were there any questions for the delegation or comments? Doesn't, oh, Councillor Radburn does have one for you, sir. If you'd just like to stick around, Councillor Radburn had a comment for you. Just to raise some questions and so council.
Oh, the question, there was a, there's another motion that went with this motion that asked the directed administration to work with the hospital and Alberta Health Services and identify other solutions to the parking issues of the community, and they have. So, your comments are a relevant one, but it's one that we supported, and we've actually directed administration to work with them and suggest some things to them. So, they're part and parcel of this motion. Different motion, but it was part of our thinking.
Don't go anywhere. Once you sit into that seat, you might never get out, right? I see Councillor McLean is in the queue as well. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, yes, Greg, I see exactly where you're coming from, and what I'm very concerned about as well on council as a whole is that they're looking at expanding the number of employees that are going to be working at that site from 500 to 700. So we do want this to be put on the AHS agenda, and that they can hopefully fix it, because I do believe if it's winter time, if you look at that map, you got a little walking to do if you want to park, you know, a certain distance, and 30 below, I think we're really trying to do our best foot forward here. So I'm really hoping the AHS will come forward, and this is what we're hoping for.
Councillor Rice, did you have a question for this presenter? Okay, sure, sure. Okay, sure. Sure. Councillor Rice, maybe, can you, sure, thank you very much. Do you want to save your question for when we get to the discussion and debate around the actual motion? We'll try and keep our questions for the presenters. Write it down, write it down, so you don't forget. Was there anybody else that wanted to come forward and let council know their view or opinion on this issue? Okay. Seeing that there's nobody else coming forward, I'll do one final call. Was there anybody else that would like to come forward and address council on any other community matter? Was there anybody else that wanted to come and speak to council about any other community matter? Okay. It's the last chance. I'll close the delegation portion, then from there on out, it's council discussing and debating. So, I don't see anybody coming forward, so I'm going to close the delegation portion of our agenda, and we'll move on. We had no unfinished business coming back from last council meeting. We do have a report, so item 7.1. Councillor Rice?
No.
Okay. So actually, we'll look for an introduction from administration, Community Growth Director, Ms. Ferguson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Administration is recommending that bylaw C-1260-10, to amend the land use bylaw, be given first reading, and also that council set Monday, June 16th, at 6:30 p.m. in council chambers as the date, time, and location for a public hearing on this matter. And the purpose of the bylaw is to identify secondary suites as discretionary in all districts that they are currently identified as permitted uses, with the authority for approving those being the development officer. And what this will do is allow the department time to do, conduct an in-depth review of the secondary suite standards and bring those forward as land use bylaw amendment.
Okay, thanks very much, Ms. Ferguson. So we'd look for a motion on this. This is for first reading tonight, so Councillor Logan.
Thank you. I'd move that we have first reading of bylaw C-1260-10 being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councillor Logan. So a motion for first reading, there's no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Logan, do you want to do the motion for date, time, and location as well?
Sure. I'd move that we have Monday, June 16th, 2014, at 6:30 p.m. in city council chambers as the date, time, and location for the public hearing on this matter.
Thanks very much, Councillor Logan. So, motion for date, time, and location for that public hearing. We do have an opportunity for discussion, debate as to the date, time, and location that's proposed. Do I see anybody ringing in? I don't, so I will call for the vote on the date, time, and location. Thank you. That motion carries as well, and that takes us into committee business, and we'll start with 8.1, the Pursuit of Excellence Committee, from April 17th. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Pursuit of Excellence Committee meeting held April 17th, 2014.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean, for that set of minutes. Did anyone note anything out of order in that set of minutes? Anything that we didn't get straight? Seeing nothing, then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor McLean, anything you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. There's a few individuals that had some travel funding. Ethan Fernandez, travel funding for $500 to attend the trampoline and tumbling championship in May in Ottawa. And the next three were all for Irish dancing for travel funding, for 500 each, was Rachel Cox, Jenna Maxell, and Maria Maxell to attend in July for Montreal, Quebec City for North American Irish Dance Championship. And the next one is another travel funding for Avery Nun for $400 for alpine skiing, which they already completed in Wester, up in Westerby, BC in April for $400. And one of the last ones was for clinic hosting funding, which was for $1,000 for Piranha Swim Club, to host a sports psychology session, May 22nd this month, which will include long-term goal-setting, staying in the sport for long-term, and improving the performance of all levels. So I think they're looking very forward to that, and the one that comes to my mind that's been in the sport for a long time is Bill Nash. So, then a couple of things were talked in the Pursuit of Excellence, I want to bring it up, about sustainability, the Pursuit of Excellence Fund was brought forward to us within nine years, as city now with funds in there, if nothing happens, it'll be, it'll run dry. The other one is, since the council today, that was pretty smart to use the money from the Canada Winter Games in 95, they didn't just say this within the city boundaries, the area covers four municipalities, County Grand Prairie, MDA Greenview, City Grand Prairie, and Saddle Hills. So it covers quite an area, and, you know, to me, that's regional, and speaks councillors' years ago thinking way forward. And also, we do have a councillor that sits on the board from the County Grand Prairie as of right now, but the funds are from before. And there was another one that was brought up that I thought was really good, was pamphlets we're going to send out within the area of Whamly, Sparit River, Beaver Lodge, different communities that, to their councils to say, even though we use the majority of the money every year, that maybe there's some in your group, in your town, that might be able to use it and access it easier. So that's being done as well. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. I see a question in the queue. Councillor Rice?
Is it common for you to fund events retroactively?
Which, do you mean for Irish dancing?
No, I mean, someone has already gone to the thing and come back, and so it seems to me that this money should be to ensure they can attend, but obviously, if they've been there and back, then they could attend.
Sometimes, Councillor Rice, what happens is, they've gotten all their paperwork in, and before the meeting starts, or it comes to council, the event has happened, but they had the paperwork in before the event.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's also important to note that the funding isn't typically large enough, that it's make or break. It's mainly support, but I think there's only relatively few situations where the lack of funding from this would stop somebody from going in, but certainly is supporting our athletes. I think the original intent was to sort of defray some of the cost for northern athletes who have to travel these great distances, so sort of put them on an even playing field as well with the athletes themselves. Okay. So, thanks very much, Councillor McLean, for that update from Pursuit of Excellence. And that takes us to the Community Growth Committee from April 22nd. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. 8.2, the Community Growth Committee held April 22nd. I move the council, receive these minutes of the Community Growth Meeting.
Thank you very much. A motion to receive the minutes from the April 22nd Community Growth Committee meeting. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? It looks like they accurately reflect the meeting. Looks like so, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole?
Yeah, we had a couple of items that come out, and I move the council adopt the terms of reference presented to the Implement Changes to the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, formerly the Take Part, Take Pride Committee. And in speaking on this motion, administration worked with the Take Part, Take Pride Committee to broaden its mandate to include an advisory role on both the civic pride and environmental responsibility. As a result, the name of the committee is recommended to be changed, and the staff will take on a resource role of the committee rather than being appointed as voting members.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the motion? I don't see anybody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole?
I've got one more. I move the council formally adopt the target of a 20% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions below the 2009 baseline levels by 2019 for municipal operations, as per the Partners of Climate Protection recommended target. And to further this, direct administration to develop adequate processes to support timely, accurate, and comprehensive data collection for greenhouse gas emissions inventories. A baseline community greenhouse gas emissions inventory for 2009 and a set of reduction targets. A project team to gather information about energy efficiency, emission reduction measures that have been put in place are planned or could be implemented to reduce further greenhouse gas emissions for future municipal operations, and a local action plan for energy conservation and reducing greenhouse gas emissions to achieve reduction targets. And in speaking with this, the city is a member of the FCM Partners of Climate Protection Program. This program includes commitment to reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. As part of this program, the city is required to create a greenhouse gas emissions inventory and set an emissions reduction target. The 20% reduction by 2019 target is recommended, target recommended is felt to be achievable by this administration.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Certainly, we saw this committee. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm a little bit nervous and apprehended about this, because we know the, in the city Edmonton alone, where they have their airport closing, they're going to do all this great new development, feasibility costs are running the other way to what they're hoping to plan. So my question might be directed to administration. Is it achievable? Is it affordable? And will we be looking back in years saying, oh, maybe it's not? So, I know the East Link Center is up to our greenhouse gas emissions by 40%, but if we can't afford it and it costs a billion, an extra 10, 20 million, a big building to build, I want to know if it is feasible before I vote on it, and I think we're just getting a lot of good wording here. So I need administration to say something, because...
I wonder if that was something that was discussed at the committee, and if it was, I don't know if, Councillor O'Toole, if you'd like to relate what was discussed in committee, or if you'd like to hear from administration on that?
Yes, it was discussed at committee, and I have backup resources from the administration to maybe comment a little bit more on their plan and what they've done in to get this to go forward.
So under, from Environmental Stewardship, Ms. Gardner, I see that you're here tonight? Speak to it.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, we think that it is, I agree with Councillor McLean, it's a very aggressive target. We do think it's achievable, based on the fact that in our corporate inventory, we have included the emissions from the wastewater and water treatment plant, and that accounts for approximately 38% of what our building corporate emissions are. With the inclusion of Aqua Terra and the biogas reactor that they hope to have online this fall, that will, they see, they will see a significant reduction in their emissions. They're hoping to be carbon neutral, so that would mean, you know, if we lose 38% right there, that's, it makes it much more achievable for us. And yes, the East Link Center does show a big percentage of our buildings' emissions, but they are working very hard to make sure that they are as efficient as possible. And I think that we have very capable facility staff who are very innovative and working hard all of the time to ensure that we are being as efficient as possible.
Thanks very much, Ms. Gardner. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm still alluding to the fact of future buildings, besides what we're already done with Aqua Terra, my help in the transition and costs of future buildings, so with that, I mean, the city of Edmonton did a lot of overlooking costs at the airport, and now they're backtracking aggressively. So that's all I have to say on that. I'll vote accordingly.
Thanks, Councillor McLean. Councillor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Councillor McLean, I can understand your hesitations and stuff. I think personally, just a comment, I think we need to start looking to be aggressive as far as climate change protection, stuff like that. I don't think there's a goal that we can set that's too high, that we cannot achieve. But I did have a question, and this is going backwards, I guess, on our council meeting reports, it's due to a bylaw amendment that we're going to be addressing on June 16th here. But, Michelle, if you may, now, at the same meeting, there is a back-and-forth ping-pong match of how many trees, how many bushes, how many trees, how many bushes. Do you think that we would be able to hit this target? Let's say, if we were to amend our bylaws and in future requests, developers would ask us to lessen the number of trees, or lessen the number of bushes? I know that we have that on our future table, I just wanted for future thought, if we're going to reduce the amount of trees that we allow developers to plant, or we force developers to plant and bushes, would that help us? Or should we, I guess, I'm looking for kind of a direction here, but should we continue with the same course that we already have set? Or would changing that potentially hurt us being able to hit these targets in the future?
So, Ms. Gardner, I think the question is, are these targets based on city operations or external decisions that cities can control or influence?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Given. The target that we set is specifically for municipal operations. So it is, it includes our buildings, what we use for fuel, our vehicle emissions, so our heat, our gas, and our vehicle emissions. So it does not, at this point, include anything outside of. And so one of the, I think it's item B, is on the recommendation is to create the community inventory, and that's where that would be part of it.
Okay, thank you. Is that interesting? Thanks very much. Councillor Terrence?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a question for administration. Just with the municipal operations definition, so you mentioned Aqua Terra in there, does, you know, that's not, obviously not a city department anymore, so what is all included under municipal operations? Ms. Gardner?
So, Mayor Given, we included Aqua Terra, because they received green municipal funds through FCM, and when they were, they received that funding through the city of Grand Prairie, and that was why we included them. Other than that, it's any building that is owned and operated by the city of Grand Prairie. So that includes buildings such as Centre 2000, the Centre for Creative Arts. So anything that we own and their utility bill is paid through the city.
Councillor Terrence? Thanks for that answer. Just was wondering if there has been any chats with any of our municipal neighbors regarding a joint plan, emission reduction plan, has that been in the works at all?
Ms. Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor Given. We did have a couple of discussions during, when we were doing, working on the regional sustainability plan. At this point, no, we have not moved forward with it, though.
Thanks very much, Ms. Gardner. Any further questions for administration? If not, I have one, Michelle. So the inclusion of the water treatment plant, my understanding of the landfill gas capture project is that a part of the funding plan that Aqua Terra has is the marketing of those credits. Are we allowed to, are we still allowed to? Credits can only be counted once, as I understand, they can only be sold once. So are we still allowed to, still allowed to count this, those savings that will come from that project, or have those savings been realized by somebody else? Or are they...
Well, we, we're not 100% sure of that, because we anticipate that, yes, we will be able to, because it's not a credit. We're not selling any carbon credits as an organization, we're just hitting a target for reductions, so it's not a sale, we would just be including it as an information item.
So because we're not attempting to sell that same credit twice, we're allowed to count, though, that savings in carbon production? Okay, thank you. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Again, I don't see anybody in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries with one opposed. Was there anything else you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes, Councillor O'Toole?
Yes, Mayor Given, we did have an individual come for...
include anything outside of. And so one of the, I think it's item B, is on the recommendation is to create the community inventory, and that's where that would be part of it.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, that answer, thanks very much. Counselor Terrence?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, just a question for administration. Um, just, um, with the municipal operations definition, um, so you mentioned Aqua Terra in there. Um, does, you know, that's not, obviously not a city, uh, department anymore. So what, what is all included under municipal operations?
So Mayor Given, we included, um, Aqua Terra because they received green municipal funds, um, through, um, FCM. And when they were, they received that funding through the city of Grand Prairie, and that was why we included them. Other than that, it's any building that is owned and operated by the city of Grand Prairie. So that includes buildings such as Center Two Thousand, um, the Center for Creative Arts. So anything that we own and their, their utility bill is paid through the city.
Uh, thank you for that answer. Uh, just was wondering if there has been any chats with any of our municipal neighbors regarding a, a joint plan, emission reduction plan? Is, has that been in the works at all?
Thank you, Mayor Given. We did have a couple of discussions during, when we were doing, working on the regional sustainability plan. Um, at this point, no, we have not moved forward with it though.
Thanks very much, Ms. Gardner. Uh, any further questions for administration? Uh, if not, I have, I have one. Uh, Michelle, um, so the inclusion of the water treatment plant, um, my understanding of the, the landfill gas capture project is that a part of the funding plan, uh, that Aqua Terra has is the marketing of those credits. Are we allowed to, are we still allowed to, credits can only be counted once, as I understand, they can only be sold once. So are we still allowed to, still allowed to count this, uh, those savings that will come from that project? Or have those savings been realized by somebody else?
Well, we, we're not a hundred percent sure of that. Um, because we, we anticipate that, yes, we will be able to because it's not a credit. Um, we're not selling any carbon credits as an organization. We are just hitting a target for reductions. So it's not a, a sale. We would just be including it as an information item.
So because we're not attempting to sell that same credit twice, we're allowed to count, though, that, that savings in carbon reduction? Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Again, I don't see anybody in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries with one opposed. Uh, was there anything else you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes, Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, Mayor Given, uh, we did have a, uh, individual come, uh, for, uh, a variance approval for an apartment complex, and we approved that. And we also had a gentleman, a very fine gentleman, come and discuss edible parks in, in Grand Prairie. So administration's looking at the viability of that.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. That'll take us to the Community Living Committee from April twenty-second. Counselor Edburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held April twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen.
Thank you for that motion, Counselor Edburn. Any discussion or debate on the set of minutes? Seeing nobody ringing in, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries, Counselor Edburn?
Thank you. Um, I move the council approve the goals and priorities of the Social Impact Investment Framework and Strategic Priorities two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen. This was a document, uh, that was in the, obviously, the committee package. But really, uh, these goals and priorities guide and support, uh, community group funding, the community group funding policy that was recently approved by council. So it's, uh, gets down to some specifics, uh, that will guide, uh, community groups as they apply for funding. Uh, the goals, uh, included social inclusion and engagement, uh, well-being and resilience, and community social well-being. Some of the priorities included a resilient family, engaging youth, supporting seniors, and thriving, uh, thriving and inclusive community. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Edburn. Any discussion or debate on the recommendation? I don't see anybody. Counselor Edburn, I, I have one question unfortunately. I was out of the city for that committee meeting. Uh, was there any discussion about the province's, um, decision in this budget to contemplate the creation of sort of, uh, Social Impact, or Social Innovation Fund, uh, within the province's legacy funds? It seems like the wording there is, is somewhat similar. So was that, was that discussed at all?
Was not. Was not.
I just wonder if there might be an opportunity for alignment there?
Okay.
Thanks very much. Uh, any further discussion or debate? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor Edburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, I would, uh, the agenda item is Volunteer Services Bureau Request for Funding. Uh, and the recommendation in the motion that I'm making tonight is as follows. I'd move council approve allocation of twenty-five hundred dollars for sponsorship of the Changing Faces two thousand and fourteen conference to the Volunteer Service Bureau, and direct administration to work with the Volunteer Service Bureau to, to identify program outcomes for the youth certification issue to fit with current FCS funding. So the two requests, obviously, as you could determine from the motion, was one for their conference. There was, uh, limited funding, uh, in our sponsorship, um, funds, but we did find, uh, twenty-five hundred in the Community Living Budget to support that conference. And secondly, the other request was for a program that they are initiating, and I thought it was a good recommendation that administration should work with, uh, Volunteer Service Bureau to see how this program might fit with, uh, FCS funding in the future. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks, Counselor Edburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor Edburn, anything else that you wanted to highlight?
Actually, yes, we had a full, uh, a, a full agenda, and, uh, so I'll just share some of the highlights for those in the audience, those who are watching, uh, and for counselors who weren't able to come to our meeting. So we had a number of, first of all, we had the Mighty Peace Youth Society delegation of, uh, students who, again, are working hard, uh, to plan, uh, Mighty Peace, uh, Day Two. Uh, they've asked for a, uh, they received a five thousand dollar facility grant, uh, about five thousand facility grant, uh, this past year. They are asking for a two-year commitment of ten thousand dollars a facility grant plus another five thousand for the next two years because they hope to, they're, they're planning as they're having two, uh, two more events at least. And so that was just sent to, uh, to, uh, administration to bring back a report in terms of, uh, how that might happen and, uh, funding sources. Uh, we had a presentation from Apathy is Boring Municipal Election Youth, Young Adult Engagement Audit. Long title, uh, but interesting presentation. Uh, talked about, uh, some of the, what they found. We received, uh, uh, that report for information, and they will be, uh, that did include some recommendations and some measures, which was, uh, very useful as well. In terms of next steps, in terms of what we're gonna do with that, with those recommendations, uh, they are gonna put forth a, uh, report, send it to Director Roth, and then we'll take a look at it at committee again. So that's, uh, to, to be announced. Um, we had a report talking, uh, as we had directed, uh, the, uh, looking at having a nominating committee to help us with the George Rupke and Bill Bowes Awards, and, uh, committee chose to send that to administration to bring forth the terms of reference, uh, that we can actually look at and, and then make a determination. Uh, we received a Affordable Housing Needs Analysis, uh, report for information. It did identify that, uh, uh, families and seniors were those who we had the longest waiting lists for. And finally, we received a letter from the South Peace Archives, who have basically let us know that they are outgrowing their present facility at the Grand Prairie Museum within three years. So they're looking for, uh, another location, uh, another place where they can, uh, do their good work. And, uh, we've directed administration by, by week committee, directed administration to work with the group to explore alternative options and locations for expansion. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Edburn. Uh, I see Counselor Logan maybe had a question or a comment for you. Counselor Logan?
Just a quick question, uh, on, uh, your, your last, uh, update. Uh, would they be looking potentially at, uh, splitting, uh, the, uh, archives between two buildings to make up for that? Or would they, would they be looking at existing, uh, park facilities?
Counselor Edburn?
Yeah, thanks, Counselor Logan. I'm, um, really, the letter didn't talk about splitting or not. So, uh, maybe that, I, I kind of assume they're looking for one facility to do all of their operations. But in terms of the discussion with them, I'm sure that would come up in terms of what we can do where.
Now, we do have, uh, a city representative on South Beach Regional Archives, Counselor Terrence, is that, is that you? Do you want to speak to it?
Yes, it is. Well, maybe I'll save it for my report at the end. Unless, unless we want to know?
Sure.
Yeah, so the, uh, the intent, so at the last, uh, we had a, a meeting last week with the archives and, uh, there was a discussion, we had a lengthy discussion on, uh, sort of envisioning of what, uh, the building could be. And, and there was discussion around, should there be a standalone building or whether it should be co-location with a larger performing arts center or whatever, uh, you know, ends up being on the space. Um, it's, it was the board's decision that they prefer to have a standalone building, to have, uh, they felt that they would receive, um, be able to retain more autonomy that way. Um, and then the other thing that came out of the meeting was they've engaged, uh, an architect who is willing to, who's volunteered their time to, um, re, to look at, uh, the old, uh, Montrose, uh, school as, uh, as a template for a building there. And so they've, uh, begun work on that.
Thanks very much, Counselor Terrence for the update. Uh, Counsel Rice?
Archives is funded by whom, Counselor Terrence?
The, uh, the archives are funded by a variety of municipal partners. So it's the city of Grand Prairie, the county of Grand Prairie, the MD of Greenview, Saddle Hills County, and the MD of Greenview. Yes, I believe those are, uh...
Go.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Terrence. Counsel Rice, do you have something further? No? Uh, thanks for the update, Counselor Edburn, um, and for answering the question. That'll take us to Community Safety Committee meeting from April twenty-ninth. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move a council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee meeting held April twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like it accurately captures what happened at the meeting? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll, I'll assume they are correct and I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor McLean, I think you had some business coming out of that meeting?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, I move council approve the implementation of full restricted residential parking around QE Two Hospital, including all streets and avenues between one hundred and four and one hundred and seven Ave and ninety-eight and one hundred Street. And just, uh, a, a little add-on, parking is restricted from eight AM to six PM. Uh, just, and I'll leave it as that.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Uh, so that reflects the recommendation that came forward at the committee level. Um, just with that clarification about time, because it was recognized that that wasn't included in the motion. Uh, so essentially expanding the status quo in terms of hours. So, uh, sorry, expanding the area, maintaining the status quo in terms of hours, uh, in time of day. Uh, any discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Terrence?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I, I was really conflicted with this, uh, with this issue. As a general principle, I believe that all city streets should be available for parking for any city residents, uh, whenever they want. Uh, no one owns the street in front of their house, and, uh, I think the principle should, uh, reflect that. However, uh, you know, under, looking at this, uh, a little bit more closely, I think I recognize that this is a very unique situation. And, um, the ideal situation, the ideal solution, sorry, is that, uh, AHS has to come to the plate and provide more parking. And, uh, I don't think this is a city responsibility to, uh, to provide that paid parking there. And we need to, this is one of the tools, by implementing the restricted parking, it's one of the tools that we can use to, to kind of force, uh, AHS to really look at the issue and to, to invest some dollars into, uh, additional parking there or come up with other creative solutions to, to ensure their staff, um, and the clients can have adequate parking. So I will be supporting this motion.
Thanks very much, Counselor Terrence. Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Given. At this meeting, it was, uh, brought by one of the delegations that, uh, council wasn't really doing anything to solve their problems. And I can tell you that, uh, last council was very adamant in solving this, and I know this council is as well. Um, the problem was getting the other player of the team to, uh, come up to bat, and, uh, they've been a little bit away from, uh, talking to us. So just wanted to make sure everybody in the audience there knows that, that, uh, the city has been doing their darndest to solve this problem. So, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Thiessen?
Mayor Bill, um, I too will be, uh, supporting this motion. Uh, I was mildly conflicted. I don't think in the same space that Counselor Terrence was. Uh, I do believe that we need to have AHS come to the table as well, uh, whether that's building a parcade, as has been suggested several times over, or a transit system that would ensure that their staff get there. Uh, I'm still of the belief that I don't think AHS should, uh, force their staff to pay for parking since they are gainfully employed by the hospital, and, uh, that should be their right to, to be able to park freely around their space. Uh, and with that being said, uh, I do know that this is, uh, this is a growth issue. So, uh, I will too be supporting this motion, and, uh, I just wanted to say thank you very much, uh, for consistently coming forward and, uh, speaking up for your rights and, uh, and it's showing in the, in the proof right now that this is probably gonna pass and you guys are gonna have free space throughout, uh, your neighborhood. So thank you.
I do see others in the queue. I hope you haven't counted all your votes before we... But, uh, so there is a, a lineup in the queue. Counselor Logan?
Thank you. Unlike, uh, uh, my fellows, uh, Counselor Thiessen and Counselor Terrence, I'm not going to abandon my position of principle on this. Uh, the street is public property and should be available to the public. Uh, the moment that we start carving up areas of public property and saying, okay, we're gonna give them to this person or that neighborhood or whatever it happens to be, it's a slippery slope, and it's one that I don't think we should follow. I do think we need to act aggressively, uh, with Alberta Health Services to, uh, uh, find a real solution to this. But taking away the right of the public to use their public infrastructure that they've paid for is a wrong way to go.
Thanks, Counselor Logan. Counselor Rice?
Well, first of all, I, I'm gonna take exception, um, to the statement that, uh, Alberta Health Services shouldn't force their employees to pay for parking. Um, pa, parking in this day and age, any place in the free world is not a right that anyone has, and particularly those that are gainfully employed and are going to be there for eight hours a day. It's not a right any, anyone has, and, uh, there are places, and I realize Grand Prairie isn't in the league, but if you were to check with Calgary, Edmonton, Toronto, Vancouver, you would be absolutely appalled at the price that people pay for parking when they go to work. Um, the price that's charged here in Grand Prairie, um, is, uh, puny compared to that. Uh, having said that, um, I, I recognize this situation is unique in that there is probably the largest employer in Grand Prairie plunked down in the middle of a residential area. Unfortunately, that residential area was there before that facility was plunked down there. So I believe we have an obligation, uh, to mitigate whatever that has, as, whatever turmoil that has caused. I have two questions. When the two people came from Alberta Health Services, did they not mention to us that they were going to expand one of their parking lots? I'm pretty sure they did, that that was, that was gonna happen immediately, that they were going to expand one of the parking lots.
Counsel Rice, I'll look to our Community Safety Director for confirmation, but I, I, quite some time ago, part of the discussion was their, uh, improved maintenance and reinvestment in, in the city-owned or city-leased lot, uh, that's just beside the tracks. So I don't know there was an expansion necessarily, but it was actually maybe improved maintenance and operations.
Thought they were gonna put in another row along.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you're correct. The, uh, intention was to pave and, uh, install some lights on the, uh, area that is currently leased to, to the city. It's, uh, in gravel condition right now, and that is part of an agreement that, uh, city administration is working on with Alberta Health Services, but, uh...
What would make the parking lot more desirable?
That's correct.
Second question, I, I wonder, do we offer hospital employees reduced monthly bus passes? And if not, I wonder if we could look at that?
Ms. Roth?
Uh, Your Worship, certainly we do not at this point in time, but we are, we've had conversations with Alberta Health Services, and, uh, part of the transits, uh, one of transit's new initiatives is to look at the larger employers in Grand Prairie and to work with, uh, them to figure out ways to encourage their employees to take transit.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Edburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, a lot of what I would say has been said, um, but the thing that I would like to add is that I, I think what's important to me is, um, we took some time, and we did the right thing. I think we consulted with the neighborhood and the community. And I was pleased to see that the report showed exactly and delineated where the community was at with respect to this. So in terms of at least the status quo and to expand it was, I think, seventy-five percent of the responses from the forty, the people who chose to, to put their druthers down in paper. So, um, I was pleased to support that recommendation, and I, and I, I wanted to thank administration for, uh, the process and the report that came to us. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Edburn. Um, I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will just make a couple of com, brief comments. Um, first off, I think it's important to recognize, so I will be supporting the motion, um, but I think it's important to recognize that this is our hospital. This isn't some other community's hospital. In fact, this is Grand Prairie's hospital. And so city council does have a responsibility to make sure that our residents can get to the hospital, uh, that the Grand Prairie residents that work at the hospital have somewhere to park. And so that's, that's why it's not just Alberta Health Services or provincial government issue. It is our, in fact, our community's hospital, and we have a responsibility to make sure that it operates well, um, to the best of our ability. So although we won't be, you know, putting in new surgical suites, but when it comes to helping manage parking issues and challenges, we do have some responsibility. Um, I don't disagree that we need to work with the provincial government and Alberta Health Services, uh, to say if you're gonna continue to use this facility, uh, you need to recognize that the neighborhood's changed, the use has expanded, and, and you need to provide some more amenities. Uh, I certainly appreciated the, the presenter who offered to work on fundraising, um, for the, for a parcade. Uh, but that kind of gets to another point. Uh, free parking or parking of any kind certainly isn't free. You know, my understanding is that, uh, a parcade-type structures, you're looking at about, uh, starting at thirty thousand dollars a stall. Uh, so if you put in a hundred stalls, you can, you can do the math pretty quickly and it adds up. So I think we have to recognize that there's some challenges there. Um, and as I said at the committee level, I think we also need to recognize that as a community, we're doing very well by Alberta Health Services and the provincial government, and they're spending more than half a billion dollars in building a new hospital, a gigantic new parcade. Um, so, um, I, you know, I thi, I think we need to be a little bit cautious about identifying them as the bad guy in this, um, because our community, our community, the community of Grand Prairie and the region of Grand Prairie is doing very, very well by them. Um, but having said that, I think that, uh, putting in these expanded restrictions allows the city of Grand Prairie to gain maybe a little bit of an extra bargaining chip, uh, that will create some incentive on all partners to look for new solutions, which I hope will include public transit, uh, maybe tailoring transit service to better support the operations at the hospital. Um, and, uh, ideally, this restricted parking would be something that would be a temporary measure because we'd get to a point where we'd have so people, so few people traveling by car to the facility, um, or other options would be created on site, uh, that we... by car to the facility, um, or other options would be created on-site, uh, that we could remove these restrictions and get back to the principle that was mentioned by Councilor Tarrant. So, uh, so I certainly support this as a, as an interim measure to get us to a better future. Any other discussion or debate? Comments? I don't see anybody in the queue, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries with one opposed. Um, Councilor Rice.
When will the signs go up, uh, and, and the permits be distributed?
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice, uh, due for administration and the Director of Community Safety.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will notify, uh, Transportation Department to, uh, create the signs and Alberta Health Services as well. Um, so I may be asking for some direction from council in terms of proper notice, uh, in order to allow the employees to know about this, and, uh, for, for the signage itself, probably, uh, a month, forty-five days maximum, you know, to install the signage, but, uh, not sure if that is proper notice as well for the employees.
I think, uh, typically we can't, uh, so even though, you know, council's passed this, my understanding from bylaw enforcement typically is we can't enforce anything until it's properly signed. Um, but, uh, I think the time to start to notice to Alberta Health Services and their employees is tomorrow, considering council made the decision tonight, and, uh, we would be getting, you know, I think the typical expectation would be that administration would act on council's motion as soon as, as practicable.
One more question, if I may.
Sir, I'm sorry.
Is it your intent to start signing closest to the hospital, working your way out the further you get from the hospital?
Uh, sir? Mayor Given, um, the installation will be done in, in one, in one, one shot, in one package, um, so we will plan, uh, to have manpower onsite, uh, probably in a couple of days to install all signs.
Over the course of a couple of days?
Yes, absolutely.
Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given, and council just voted, and I'm glad Councilor Rice asked that question, and when all the signage is in place and it's forty-five days or six days by the summer, that bylaw is actually enforcing this change. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor McLean. Okay, so I don't see anybody else in the queue, so we'll move on. Uh, Council, you had, uh, further motions, I think, that wasn't the only business that committee did, there was other stuff too, right?
No.
Councilor McLean, do you wanna make sure your microphone's live?
Given, thank you, Mayor Given, there is, uh, two changes, eight point four-two and eight point four-three, just the last sentences, as, uh, uh, as the most qualified to, as the lowest tender, and I'll say that as I'm reading it, so just let council know this little correction of wording. So I'll move a council award tender, T twenty-five, uh, dash five-five-two, dash fourteen, for two thousand fourteen sidewalk program to Raider Site Services Limited in the amount of two million three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars, excluding GST, as the lowest tender meeting city specifications.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Any discussion or debate on this motion to award the sidewalk, twenty-fourteen sidewalk program? I don't see anybody ringing in. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given, I move a council award tender, T dash thirteen dash five-five-two, dash fourteen, for the two thousand fourteen road rehabilitation overlay program to Nelson Sand and Gravel Limited in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-two cents, excluding GST, as the lowest tender meeting city specifications.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Any discussion or debate on this recommendation? Councilor Rice?
So, could maybe Mr. Galante advise, how much does past reputation count in the evaluation?
Mr. Galante?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we have to wait a very strict criteria instead of a tender. Um, for a tender is just the lowest either. When it comes to an RFP, a request for proposals, our evaluation criteria is more flexible, and we can incorporate, um, other items as evaluation criteria, but for tender itself...
Okay, so why do we issue tenders instead of RFPs when past performance is so important in these type of issues?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Given, and the, uh, the amounts are basically controlling the thresholds for, for a tender, in this case.
So the, the amount, the s- the s- the amount of the project, the scale of the project, that's gonna be threshold for request for proposals?
Correct.
Um, okay, Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given, I just, uh, hopefully answered some of Councilor Rice's question as well as, uh, the committee meeting, uh, the question was brought up about Raiders' uh, site services, and a couple years ago, they never did any work in the city, it was brought up, and they did get awarded, and they did some work, and the question was asked to city staff that, how was it done? They said, "To excellent service, they did a very, very good job." So they keep their eyes open, not just RFP and tenders as well, to make sure that everybody's following what they should be. And, uh, so far, from what I, the feedback out of that committee was, they were happy with that one.
Any further discussion or debate? I don't see anybody in the queue, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries with one opposed. Uh, Councilor McLean, anything else you wanted to highlight for that set of minutes? Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. It was, uh, it was a pretty active, uh, community safety meeting, but I think tonight council reviewed everything, looked at everything, and they made their vote count, so, uh, other than that, we, we seen the whole room was full, and, uh, so I think, uh, we, we did the right thing to vote.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Uh, Councilor Logan, I think that takes us to your Corporate Services Committee meeting from April twenty-ninth. I'd like to make sure your microphone's on and take it away.
Make sure that people can hear those valuable words. I'd like to, uh, ask council to, uh, uh, receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting of April twenty-ninth.
Thanks very much, Councilor Logan. Uh, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Did we get everything right? Looks like, uh, we did. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Councilor Logan?
Thank you, there's a couple of items of business, uh, first is, uh, fire alarm panel and, uh, uh, CSD building lighting upgrades, and the recommendation that I'd like you to consider is that council approve the request of funding from the Facility Renewal Reserve Fund in the amount of eighty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for the fire alarm and panel upgrades, and community social development building lighting upgrades.
Thanks very much, Councilor Logan.
If anybody has any questions, I'm sure our, uh, acting city manager would love to fill them in.
Thanks, thanks very much, Councilor Logan. Uh, and so we do have sort of two motions here, one is, uh, the first that you're making is, is establishing of source funding, and the second one would actually award a tender for...
I can do them together if you...
No, no, you, you're exactly right, so I just wanna make sure, just in case anybody else was asking, um, any discussion or debate, questions or comments about this recommendation for funding? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. Okay, there you go, Councilor Logan, I guess we know where the money's coming from, so we can...
All right, then we'll proceed with, uh, the, uh, the motion for council to award tender T one-two dash four-three-three dash fourteen for the fire alarm panel upgrades and community social development building lighting upgrades to U.S.R. Flint Field Services Limited in the amount of, uh, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars and forty, and four hundred dollars, excluding GST, as the most qualified proponent meeting city specifications.
Thanks very much, Councilor Logan, any discussion or debate on that, uh, recommendation? Again, seeing nobody in the queue, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, Councilor Logan?
Yes, uh, item eight point fi- uh, five point three is, uh, a recommendation asking council to approve the consolidated audited financial statements of the city of Grand Prairie for the year end, ending December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. And man, are we fortunate to have Mr. Anderson here, so he can answer all of the questions on that one. Uh, and... Oh, okay, uh, that was such a little one, just a couple million dollars, I didn't even notice it there. Uh, the, ask council to approve the transfer, that's the one you're referring to, uh, transfer of two million seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars to the future expenditure reserve for emerging priorities.
Thank you, Mayor Given, I was just wondering if Ken could speak to the two million seven hundred thousand and the transfer into the reserve, I get the reserve, but just speak to the two million.
Two point seven million dollars is approximately a little over two percent of our operating budget, and the reason we're moving it to the future expenditures reserve is, the normal policy is that it goes to the financial stabilization reserve, there's approximately nine million dollars in that reserve at this point, and with the economic forecast for Grand Prairie looking quite good, we thought with the number of emerging projects that that was the appropriate place for it to go.
Thanks very much, Mr. Anderson, any discussion or debate, questions or comments? Can, so, is, I mean, first, is it correct that this is the, essentially the surplus from the twenty thirteen budget year, year end?
It is correct.
Can you speak to a hi- at, at a high level about generally how those savings, uh, was it majority savings, additional revenue, uh, at a high level, how did the city have a surplus?
Well, there were a number of areas, there was a number of areas in the protective services, what was called protective services, especially in the fine revenue, there were a number of, uh, salary savings spread throughout the city as well, so it really wasn't the revenue side, it was the, well, it was the revenue side and the fine side, but it was a lot of the expenditures related to salaries.
Salary savings, okay, thank you. Um, any further discussion or debate on this motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, Councilor Logan, we'll let you get back to that other one.
Sure, uh, item eight point five point three on the agenda then is, uh, uh, recommendation that council approve the consolidated audited financial statements of the city of Grand Prairie for the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen.
Thanks very much, Councilor Logan, any discussion or debate on that recommendation? To receive the audited financial statements? Seeing none, and knowing everybody had a chance to review them on the committee agenda, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that motion carries, uh, Councilor Logan?
Sure, uh, I want to, uh, move that council continue the hundred dollar property tax rebate for seniors who receive the Alberta Seniors Benefit and direct administration to enter into a data-sharing agreement with the Ministry of Alberta Seniors in order, uh, the adminis- oh, to administer the program in-house.
Yeah, thanks, Councilor Logan, for getting the wording right, even though it wasn't written exactly right. Uh, discussion or debate, Councilor Rice?
Uh, now this, do people have to apply for it, or, uh, is it automatic?
Mr. Anderson, do you wanna take that one?
It's actually automatic, it all depends who qualifies for the program, the information is provided to us, then we'll provide a credit on their tax account.
A credit, not a, not a check?
Mr. Anderson?
No, they are required to pay the taxes, so we thought the simplest way to do it was to just apply the credit to the tax account.
What about if people pay their taxes by the month in that set?
Councilor Rice? Uh, sorry, Mr. Anderson? Councilor Rice, that's a good question, Mr. Anderson.
Oh, I wanna say so much.
Well, there will be resolution at the end of the year when it's, um, it is reconciled.
Just, speaking of that too, just my own personal experience, I know that halfway through the year, if you're on property tax installment, your payment amount per month can change, uh, and does after the city sets its mill rate. So you, for the first half of the year, you're paying at a certain rate, and then after the city sets its mill rate, for the second half of the year, it's adjusted to reflect whatever the mill rate is. Uh, so administration have an opportunity by time to...
Others twice, twice during the year could be adjusted.
Okay, uh, anything further, Councilor Rice, on that one? No. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given, just a question again, what's the overall budget for this hundred dollars? I know there's a, an area that the seniors fall in that can receive this hundred dollars. Um, I got some, a number in my mind, I'm just wondering, what is the, the full number in one year?
Mr. Anderson?
It's approximately four hundred and fifty people, so the total cost is about forty-five thousand.
Okay, um, I was wanting to make an amendment to it, I think it's low, so, I was wanting to make an amendment to this. I can't make an amendment to it? No? I, I like to make amendment, I think a hundred dollars is very low, I like to make a...
Council members, can, can make amendment to a motion?
Yep, I wanna make an amendment to this motion that I believe that it should be raised to two hundred dollars.
Thanks, Mr. Anderson. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given.
Council, so, uh, that amendment is in order? Um, Councilor Rice?
We table this amendment to the, uh, budget cycle.
I don't think you can table an amendment, because the amendment is affecting the main motion, and you, and the main motion needs to be dealt with one way or another tonight. Um, we could, uh, we could defeat the amendment and table the main motion? Well, that would actually impact the ability to, to offer the program this year. Um, the other alternatives could be a referral to the administration to look at all alternatives...
Defeat the amendment, pass the motion and make a referral to the count, to administration to look at, at an increase in next year's budget, would that be the process?
Uh, or even pass the process.
Oh, well, we, we could.
You could, you could pass the amendment...
And the snow could all melt by January first.
I think, I think the, 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 Councilor Rice, yes, the, the one challenge, uh, is that administration hasn't identified a funding source for the additional amount that we posed in the amendment, so, um, so we can think about that. Councilor Tarrant?
Sorry, just to clarify, was this a, a friendly amendment, motion?
Uh, amendments are amendments, we don't have...
Okay, so we're voting on the amendment first, okay.
Oh, we'll, we'll vote on the, uh, mo- vote on the amendment first, and then whether it passes or not, then the main motion is amendment, and then we'd vote on the main motion.
I, I will be voting, uh, against the amendment then, I, I agree with Councilor Rice, I think this is best suited to be looked at at budget time, when we can identify if this is, there's new spending we wanna have at that point.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Tarrant, anybody else care to speak on the amendment? Again, we're just speaking on the main, on the amendment, on the main motion. Councilor O'Toole?
Yeah, Mayor Given, I agree with, uh, what's been said here so far, I think, uh, we could maybe look at the proposed amendment in the budget talks, but I think we need to leave what we got the way it is at present.
Thanks, Councilor O'Toole, Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill, uh, I'm, uh, oh, sorry, I guess I'm loud enough. Thanks for activating my mic for me there, Bill. Um, I'm, uh, I'm gonna speak up in, uh, favor of the amendment, but I will not be voting for it, I'm sorry, Councilor McLean. I, I'm for it, uh, Councilor Rice and I were just whispering to each other, and we thought it laughable, uh, that we would spend sixty thousand dollars on some bears, but we couldn't find in our budget perhaps to take care of seniors, and I think perhaps if we wanna look at affordability within the city, this should be something that we should take legitimately to our budget discussions in the fall.
Thanks, Councilor Thiessen, Councilor Logan?
Yes, I'd just like to, uh, uh, have the privilege of closing debate when, uh, everybody's spoken.
Uh, actually, Councilor Logan...
Oh, it's the amendment, yeah, quite right.
We're, we're on the amendment, yep, so you certainly can have that right when it's the main motion.
Okay, so then, uh, uh, I will speak, uh, uh, to this motion, I believe that, uh, we're being fairly petty in seeing this as such a huge dollar item that it has to go to, uh, next budget cycle. Uh, in truth, it may be something that's a very important sum of money to the people, to the seniors that are in their own housing, and that's something we should be concerned about, that's been at a hundred dollars for some time, if, if I remember right. So I think, uh, Councilor McLean has, uh, taken a very good initiative, and let's not be silly, guys, let's just pass it, it's not that much money.
Thanks, Councilor Logan, uh, anybody further on the amendment? I don't see anybody, I, I won't, I'll, uh, I won't be supporting the amendment, uh, I agree the program could use a revision and an update, uh, potentially an increase, uh, be happy to consider that. Um, I think the time to raise that, though, in fairness to administration, would have been, um, a number of months ago, when this first issue, when this issue first came to committee, uh, was recognized the province was gonna cancel their program, and so ours was in jeopardy, uh, we told administration we wanted to save it, I think the time that we wanted to tell them to increase it might have been then, um, the other time to tell them we wanted to increase it would have been when this came to committee, um, a week or two ago, um, I think any of those opportunities would have been good, um, I would... I would, at budget time, I would move, I would support a motion to increase it for the twenty fifteen. But I will be voting against it. Counselor Rice?
One of my big concerns about this program has been the province's soft shoe routine where it's our money, but they sort of act like it's a provincial program and take the credit for giving it. And I assume that that is part of the motion was that administration enter into a data sharing agreement in order to administer the program in-house. I, I'm assuming that that's to counteract that problem. It's, many years the province has always put forth the assumption that it's their money when it's really ours, so I hope that's going to change.
Thanks, Counselor Rice. The province, if I understand the program correctly, previously the province had a rebate program of their own for seniors who essentially qualified for this income subsidy. The province eliminated that program because they've now introduced a program that allows seniors to defer a hundred percent of their property taxes until they sell their homes. And so there was no provincial program that we could piggyback on anymore. Now we're asking them to give us the information on who would qualify under this category, and we'll give them the credit directly, so it does avoid exactly what you're talking about where our money would come on a provincial check.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion or debate on the amendment? Don't see anybody else. Thank you. I think everybody else had a go around, so I'll call for the vote. Reminder, again, we're voting just on the amendment to increase the amount to two hundred dollars. And a reminder, that was to increase, so a vote in favor would see the increase go forward, and a vote against would just have the motion stay as it was. That motion does not carry, so we're back to the main motion as it was originally. Counselor Logan does have the opportunity to close on his main original motion. Counselor Logan, did you want to speak to it? So any further discussion or debate on the main motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor Logan, you had one, one last thing coming out of that meeting?
One more item of business, the strategic plan twenty-
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Sorry? My apologies.
Counselor Rice?
Would now be the time to refer this issue to the, the next budget session, or do we do it at the end of his committee? Like, when does it fit in?
I'm easy, I think.
Yeah, I would like to move that we refer the, a review of the Alberta seniors benefits, or the property tax rebate for seniors to the next budget.
So, so a motion to refer the-
A review of it.
The city of Grand Prairie property tax rebate for seniors to the budget. Thanks very much. So, any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Sorry to wait.
That motion carries unanimously. Counselor Logan?
Thank you. I'll move that council approve its own strategic plan, twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on the motion? This strategic plan is the result of council's planning session and workshop in January, just shortly after the election. I think it is important to note for anybody that's watching, who immediately rushes to the city's website to download it, because I know that's what people will do as soon as they hear there's a new strategic plan. I think it's important to note that the strategic plan really goes hand in hand with administration, CLT's strategic business plan, and there are a number of the items that council raised that are addressed in that administration plan. The two really have to be taken almost as a set, and that's a little bit of a change from previous years, so just wanted to make that note for anybody that's watching. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. And when this passes, or hopefully passes here, it'll go on our webpage real quick.
Yeah, I, I believe that's something that we'd be able to add tomorrow. Any discussion or debate? Anything further? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor Logan, was there anything else you want to highlight?
No other business that I'm aware of. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. So we did have our two additional agenda items. The first was eight point six, the purchase of the Young Offender Center. Do we have a council member that'd care to make a motion? Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council approve the purchase of the former Young Offender Center, being lot twenty-two, block sixty, plan one four two six one six nine six, for the sum of one dollar.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn.
Just a very quick overview. This has been something last council and this council have been interested in. Administration has done a great deal of work in working with the province. The end result being that this, this facility is, is available to us for, for that amount. And now can be used for municipal purpose for the greater good. It's the only kind of stipulation. It broadened the potential for our uses. If this would be successful tonight, then I guess a process will be started to look at consulting with, with our community and our organizations to see what might be the best use of, of that property. But I think tonight, the, the start is that let's support the good work of Minister Drysdale when he was infrastructure minister, and, and our staff's work to make this available to us. It's an asset. What we do with the asset will be determined in the next while.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll, I just want to highlight what Counselor Radburn mentioned. We certainly owe some thanks to Minister Drysdale in his advocacy efforts in ensuring that this made its way through Treasury Board and, and through the department. I would certainly appreciate him looking out for the community's interest in ensuring this facility can be reused for good purpose. If there's nothing else, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And then we had item eight point seven, the purchase of public art. Do we have a council member ready to make a motion on that, an agenda that was added? Counselor Radburn, is that you as well?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council, council acquire the work. That council approve the acquisition of the work of art entitled Grizzly Family by Stuart Steinheiser through a partial donation arrangement at a cost to the city of sixty thousand dollars. So, very quick overview here, is this is, I think, things just came together. We had this public art that was available that's in, in the, in the, in the community. We have a price that was negotiated that really is a partnership, city purchasing some, but the artist donating significant dollars relative to what the marketplace would give him for that piece of art. We think that the extent, that it's a great fit for our North Musco Seabee Park expansion, and we think it's a great fit because it's our centennial year. So what better timing to get into having some public art in our fine city? Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. That motion carries as well. I believe that handled all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence. We did have two delegations present, but they were both related to the QE two hospital parking issue, and so I think that those have been dealt with. We had no notices of motions. That takes us to council member reports. And we'll go to Counselor Rice with an AUM report. Counselor Rice?
I attended it Ottawa where we met with the Alberta Progressive Conservative Caucus and the Liberal Caucus, the Alberta Liberal MPs, where we made the point of how important it is that the federal government support the municipalities, and particularly for like the Building Canada Fund that, the lion's share of that must go to the municipalities, that it is vitally important. So we had some fairly good meetings with various ministers as well as the entire caucus. Did a presentation to the Economic Club of Canada, and the, the concept of that discussion was that Alberta is growing at the rate of a city size and a half of Grand Prairie annually, the size of Red Deer annually, and it is the cities that are primarily going to be expected to accommodate that growth, and that the cities cannot survive without sustainable, predictable, secure income. And so ask them to support the municipalities in, in their effort. So, all in all, I think it was an extremely good discussion. They met with Minister Rick McGyver, the Minister of Infrastructure, and had some meetings with him, and met with Minister Greg Weddick, the Acting Minister of Municipal Affairs, talking about the Municipal Government Act review, and was extremely pleased with that meeting and his enthusiasm, and I do hope that he moves forward as quickly as he indicated that he wished to move forward.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. We had an update from the Grand Prairie Sports Council. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick comment here. Tomorrow, coming to Community Living, will be a request from sport council for support for the sport council to put forward a bid for the Alberta fifty-five games, uh, winter games, rather, Alberta fifty-five plus winter games. This will be a bid package that's supported by the region, and the last step will be a letter of support from, from council. So this will come forward tomorrow. And then the bid will obviously go on, and we'll find out if we, or, sorry, if we're fortunate enough to get the bid. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Radburn, Grand Spirit Foundation?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just quickly, I will be putting in my colleagues' mailboxes, Grand Spirit Foundation two thousand and thirteen annual report. Highlights the board of directors. Really, the board is all, is represented as all the municipalities in the, in the Peace area, North Peace area, not North Peace, kind of the river south. It talks about kind of a number of residents, in particular, I guess, programs and housing. Talks about turnover, talks about staffing. Interesting to note that of a hundred and twelve staff, fifty-seven percent have worked at least five years with the, with the foundation, so seven percent over twenty years, twenty-five percent ten to twenty years, five to ten, another twenty-five years. So I think speaks well to Grand Spirit Foundation as employer, the good people that work with us there. Talks about waitlisting, and also some of the highlights. We completed a need and demand analysis, preliminary planning for a new seniors facility. Municipal fair has announced a lodge renewal funding of three thousand per lodge unit. This will enable the Grand Spirit Foundation to make upgrades and improvements to lodge facilities. Our four seniors lodges received three years' support of living accommodation licensing through Alberta Health, and we signed a three-year collective agreement with QP. So, kind of, some of the highlights of two thirteen for Grand Spirit. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Counselor Tarrant, did we use up everything from South Peace Regional Archives? Do you want to turn your microphone on?
Just one more comment. So with the whole new facility, I just wanted to let council know that the archives are anxiously awaiting some sort of feedback from the city on what the, the process is for determining what's going to be on the site, and whether their application and whether their thoughts for the site have any merit or any resonance with council.
Thanks very much. And I think the action of committee was, sorry, I wasn't there, but it was to refer that to administration for, yeah. I believe that was all of our reports from council members on external agencies, boards, and commissions. We'll start with council member Roundtable, and we'll go with Counselor McLean this time and work our way clockwise.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I wrote down a few here. April twenty-second, I also attended Earth Day at the library. April twenty-eighth, day of mourning, flag raising. We attended that, quite a few councillors, and still shocking to see how many people actually die in Alberta. That's the ones they're just reporting on, and it's a hundred and eighty-eight last year. April twenty-ninth, we had another in-camera for a good part of the day, and that went over really well. May second, I attended as well a few other with the mayor and councillor, the heritage, the fair, at the opening ceremonies at the Teresa Sergeant Hall. And then right after that, I attended City Hall Health and Safety Barbecue and pick up some bags of debris along the railroad, and of course, we did not cross it. We don't want to get a ticket. And a lot of things were picked up in that scrub. Metal, big metal box, and you wouldn't believe what was just behind City Hall, so imagine the rest of the city. And the main thing of the whole two weeks was the groundbreaking event for Odyssey House, and that was the biggest one. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Counselor Logan?
The flag raised in that City Hall to mark the day of remembrance for workers injured or killed on the job or in the workplaces. And one of the notable things about this event was it was the first one, I think I can remember, in a long time that had a hundred percent attendance from council. Memory serves me right, everybody was there, and I think that, okay, everybody but one, but I'm relying on Counselor Thiessen, so that could be wrong.
That's right.
The, on Thursday, May first, I attended the board of directors meeting of the dinosaur museum, the Curry Dinosaur Museum, and they have a tremendous amount of, of celebrating and information to get out, and I'll more properly leave that to Counselor O'Toole, but it was, it was good to see that, that council in, in, in action and, and the rate of preparation that they're doing for this summer. It's going to be quite exciting. Finally, on Friday, May second, I attended the subdivision and, and appeal board, and it was an issue involving residential parking. I had two community volunteers on the board to make sure I didn't get too wild, and we resolved the issue to the, I think, to the benefit of everybody, the city, the residents, and the joining neighborhood. So that was very good piece of work, I think, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Well, the last two weeks have been quite busy, although I haven't spent a lot of time in Grand Prairie myself personally. I did attend the Earth Day proclamation on the twenty-second, with several of my council cohorts and the mayor as well. And then on the twenty-fourth, I was at the Volunteer Services Bureau luncheon for their big event over the weekend. It was the only part of that event that I could take in, but I got to see Counselor Lauren Radburn and Reeve Liamboe, make their proclamation on behalf of the Volunteer Bureau Services, or Services Bureau, sorry. That day then, I ripped out to Jasper for the Alberta Library Conference, which I have to say was a fantastic conference. Kind of wish that it was a little more outdoorsy, but, you know, being in the mountains, it was just great to absorb it.
It's a library.
I know, but you could read books under the sky and stuff, you know. But I took in a lot of great sessions there, sessions about leadership, about library management systems. And we had quite a spirited debate, actually, as my, my colleague over here in the, in the audience could probably attest to, about at the Alberta Library Trustees Association, determining how we're going to try to lobby the government to change the Municipal Government Act to support libraries and other buildings. Corey Beck over here was, had a very feisty remark, and it was very astute and profound. I think it helped shift the board. It was a matter of using off-site levies to support the building and construction of, I guess, municipal buildings, including the libraries. So that was a little bit of a wishy-washy sort of attempt to change the Municipal Government Act. It did not go through, according to ALTA, so that was good. I did go through at the LAA, so it would be interesting to see how that discussion takes place in the parliament buildings. And then I returned home for a quick day to do the QP flag raising, and then I was off to Edmonton this week for CHRA's forty-six National Housing Congress. There's many great speakers there, and I was able to take in a couple sessions under the topics of social affordable housing, how to build green and use smart designs to conserve energy efficiencies in your housing- energy efficiencies in your housing or met, how to mitigate public pressure for infill projects, and rezoning strategies to support the inclusion of social housing within there. And then from there, it was, you know, I had the evenings to kill, so I went and toured the different libraries around Edmonton, Lois Hole, the Downtown Library, and Fort Saskatchewan Library, checking out their children's area, because that's what we're working on at the library board right now, and I made a few contacts at that conference in Jasper, decided to take advantage of there. And yeah, and I came back today, and it was Music Monday at Parkside School, an impromptu gathering in front of a classroom of grade six students that Counselor Rory Tarrant was at before. They asked me if I wanted to be mayor, and I said that should have been a question they should reserve for Counselor Rory Tarrant when he was in their class. That was all I've done.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Rice?
I'm sure that thrilled the mayor to death. I too attended Earth Day, and I want to give huge congratulations and thanks to Aqua Terra. I think we all know that discarded coffee cups are a huge blight. You just have to look against any metal fence and you'll see coffee cups lined up. So the provision of coffee cup recycling bins is huge, and so I want to thank Aqua Terra for beginning that initiative here in Grand Prairie. A hundredth anniversary is rolling along. It is picking up so much speed. We're currently in the process of preparing a list for council as to what things we would like them to attend. It's kind of still evolving as we speak, but one thing is if you stroll down a hundredth Avenue, from a hundred and second street to ninety-ninth street, you will find thirty-seven large photos in store windows and fourteen permanent plaques depicting downtown Grand Prairie over the last hundred years. And you can also follow along on your smartphone at www.gptour.ca. So I will hand out one of these booklets to everyone except Counselor Thiessen, Logan, and O'Toole, who've got theirs early, and I think you will find this book a real delight. And I have some here for the media after the meeting. I almost defy anyone to look at that book without at least one saying, oh my, remember that, or look at that, I never knew this. It's a book that will elicit all sorts of comments from people. So that's, I hope you enjoy that book. And as I said, there is so many things coming up that we are working on as late as noon today. Counselor O'Toole, Thiessen, and myself, we're making revisions to events, and we're, we now have a real plethora of nominations for the park naming, and it's really interesting just to read over the nominations and why they were nominated makes you proud to be from Grand Prairie.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Over the last two weeks, I attended twenty-three events, and I'm going to highlight four of them, if I could. I did attend the GP Volunteer Services Appreciation Luncheon, and I did really appreciate spending a lot of time with Linda Duxbury. I was her chauffeur, picking her up at the airport and taking her back and taking her to the airport and then spending some luncheon with her at the awards. I do want to highlight one gentleman that was nominated for the award. It's Alex Billetto, young, fine gentleman. He's in the Army Cadets. He's got a number of awards just through being in the Army Cadets. I went to the Sixteenth Annual Swan Festival. Mayor, or Counselor Radburn was there as well, and it's such a success, I'm thinking next year they're going to have to find a bigger venue because the place was literally packed with people. Day of mourning, I attended the proclamation reading that you gave, and on this last Friday, I attended the Chair Leaders Day, something that I'm proud to be part of for the last three years. I spent from about seven-thirty in the morning till about four o'clock in the afternoon in a wheelchair. I did a number of city functions that we were part of, and yeah, I'm pretty sore. I still a little ache and pain, but it was a good day. It wasn't about picking anybody apart, or companies, or businesses. It was about showing awareness, and a lot of people had a different view in that chair on how a regular day, or a person that's confined to a wheelchair, has to deal with. And that's what the whole gamut of events was about. Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll just quickly go through a list of things that I attended, in no particular order. I also attended the flag raising for the day of mourning, the Chair Leaders Day with many other councillors, the Odyssey House sob turning, the Grand Prairie Regional College and Careers, the Next Generation reception, and had the opportunity to have dinner with the Careers Next Generation group after that. I attended the Grand Prairie Volunteer Services Luncheon, also with Counselor Tarrant, I attended the Aurora, the Aurora Home fundraiser, which they were very pleased with. They made money that exceeded their expectations, so they were very happy with that. I also had the opportunity to read the proclamation for the, my first proclamation, and also the proclamation for the First Annual Youth Engagement Awards at the Creative Arts Centre on Friday, and I think that was it. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a few highlights here. So on the twenty-third, I attended the Careers the Next Generation kickoff, and it was great to meet with different representatives across the province and seeing what's being done for career development and what's being done with GPRC and how they're helping there. On the twenty-fourth, attended the GP Volunteer Services. It was great to see the Young Leaders Awards and to see that we have so many active young people in our community that are out there and making a contribution. Great to see. Counselor Clayton mentioned on the twenty-sixth, went to the Aurora Home fundraiser. It's great to see support there for such a wonderful organization that's starting up. And on the second, attended the groundbreaking for Odyssey House and the supportive center that's going on there, and it's great to see that, you know, shelves are in the ground and that, you know, within a year that that building will be up and running and providing a valuable service to the community.
Thanks, Counselor Tarrant. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Again, I'll, since I'm late on the Roundtable, I'll just highlight a few different ones, as much as I can. GPRC and Careers Next Generation, I was pleased to go to that. It was, reminded me of my previous career in terms of Careers Next Generation. It started when I was involved in the administration at the Public School. I reckon it's growing, growing, growing. I was able to bring greetings on behalf of Mayor Given and council at the Volunteer Services Bureau, and that evening, I was at the hundredth anniversary Art of the Peace Juried Show, and it was a centennial year, I guess, event, and the city sponsored the first prize. And the first, the three prize winners were Ken Hosko, Grant Berg, and the first-place finisher was Kerry Kukas. So it was nice to be a part of. And the jury for the show was so impressed with the art in our peace country, so it was nice for everyone to hear. On the twenty-sixth, I actually went to the finals of the Junior National Rocketball Championships, and feedback was very positive, so really appreciated our transit service that helped, and of course, our organizers and the Eastlake Center did themselves proud. I actually went with Counselor Logan. We went to the Suicide Prevention Resource Center, welcome for a kind of a tour and a welcome for Gladys Blackmore, so it was nice to see. I hadn't been in the facility where they are now, and it was nice to welcome Gladys. The Media Conference for Innovation Entrepreneurial Awards recipients, a few people went, came to, and that'll be more formally, I guess, presented at the conference evening, but it was nice to get to be able to congratulate those who were awarded. And finally, the Odyssey House Transitional Housing Project. What struck me when I was there on Friday afternoon before I left for Edmonton was that a project that we, all levels of government and all of our regional partners and our community should be proud of. So there is the example of us all working together to make, to address a need in our community. So kudos to everybody involved, particularly those who advocated, the Cliff Turners, et cetera of the world, just were dogged in their determination, and finally, everything came together. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. So I'll be brief. In addition to a number of the events that were already mentioned, I also was in Edmonton on the twenty-second, twenty-fourth. I was there to participate in the Alberta Chambers of Commerce Political Action Day, where they host an MLA dinner. I was a guest of RR Chamber of Commerce, who invited me to attend. It was a great opportunity to meet with members of the government, as well as a lot of business people from across the province, and City of Grand Prairie and our region. The next day, I was there for the EUMA's MJ Review Committee meeting, and the following day, I made a presentation to the EUMA board. On twenty-ninth, here at City Hall, I made the Proclamation for Immunization Awareness Week, certainly obviously topical, considering the news that we've had about the recent outbreak of measles across the province, and certainly hope people recognize that there is an ability to impact those types of outbreaks in the future by ensuring that their children are immunized. I also participated in the Chair Leaders Day that has been mentioned by a number of council members, and on Saturday, the third, I joined with, I'm sure, probably a thousand of my closest friends, four hundred and some of my closest student friends at the GPRC convocation ceremonies. It was actually the largest class of graduates, if you wanted to call them that, in GPRC's history. Was fantastic to see, and the thing that I'm always struck by is the number of institutions that are there to participate as well. Everybody from University of Northern British Columbia, U of C, U of A, and Counselor Clayton, is there anybody else missing from universities? So there were at least those three different universities where, and Athabasca University, thank you. So four universities where residents were receiving paper and degrees from those universities after having completed their studies here on-site in Grand Prairie, which I think is just fantastic. The other significant thing that happened was there was actually a student of Red Deer College who chose to, did some courses, I believe, here in Grand Prairie, was a Red Deer College student, and chose to receive her, chose to do her convocation here in Grand Prairie. And I believe that was the first time that that had ever happened, and so college president Don Natchek really highlighted that, because I think that's the direction that post-secondary education is going in the province, and certainly I think that speaks well about the opportunities that northern residents and residents in our region will have to take advantage of institutions anywhere across the province, or maybe across the country, and to be able to do their instruction here in Grand Prairie, I think it's fantastic to see, and certainly appreciated the opportunity to be there and represent the city of Grand Prairie. So with that, we'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.